Thank you. Hello, I'm calling to order the Greenfield City Council, August 18th, 220th Regular Meeting at 6:30 PM via WebEx conferencing. This meeting is now being recorded and videotaped by the City Council in GCT-15. If any other person's presence are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. So I believe I saw the recorder on, correct? Okay. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call of members?
Yes. Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Glenn?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Counselor Bottoms?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler? I do not see that he's in attendance yet. I will come back to him in a moment.
Thank you.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Herschel?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgji?
Here.
President Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Present.
Counselor Wheeler? Hi. Counselor Wheeler? I do not see that he's in attendance, but I will try to keep you apprised if you just join the meeting, President Ricketts. You do have him.
Thank you. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and this is completely voluntary. Okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Again, anyone who would like to speak, please make sure you put your name and address in the chat. Right now, I will intitate a motion to approve the July 21st, 2021 council meeting.
Some move, Stempel.
I'll second it. Mayo?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Or abstain? Okay. That is everyone who is at the meeting presently. Okay. Communications from Superintendent of Schools and School Committee. They were not able to make it, so they sent us an email. So I'm going to read this to be put into record. Counselor Ricketts and sitting members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to address you by email this month, as certain deadlines necessitate that the school committee also meets on the evening of August 18th. We'd like to inform you the following. Dr. Christine DeBarge will start as our new superintendent on Monday, August 23rd. An impressive paving project is underway at Newton School. We are grateful to Director Warner and the DPW for implementing this as much-needed improvement in time for the start of school. The first day of school is Wednesday, September 1st for grades 1 through 12. Kindergarten screenings happen on September 2nd and 3rd, with the first day of pre-K and K being on Friday, September 3rd. Communications went out last week to families with options and details for both before and after-school care programs. The face coverings policy for the district from spring 2021 remains in effect and unchanged. The superintendent and other leadership team continue to monitor guidance from the CDC, DPH, and DESI. There is no remote school option for 2021 and 2022. Students will attend full school days, Monday through Friday. Please contact us with any questions. And just go back to your email if you need to see the email addresses from Dr. Hool, Amy Peretti, or our new superintendent. So I thank them for getting that information to us. Okay. Communication from the mayor, city officers, and employees. Mayor Rita Gardner?
Mayor, you are on mute. That's been happening to me a lot tonight. Sorry about that. This is the third meeting. The third meeting of the evening. Which is why I wasn't at the fourth meeting of the evening, the school committee meeting. I don't have a great deal to put forward to you this evening. I do want to let you know that I'm going to, at the end, I'm going to leave with something, and then I'd like to turn it over.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor. Could everybody mute? I don't, I don't know where the sound's coming from. I'm so sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. That's okay. It happens. I'd like to turn, after I give you my four things on my list here, I'd like to turn it over to, with your permission, Counselor, President Ricketts. I'd like to turn it over to Chief of Staff Danielle Laterno, who would like to share a slide program with you on the status of the Court Square project. And I will address that right before. I don't think it's six slides. It won't take very long. So if you're, if you're okay with that, fine. I will let you decide.
Please, go forth.
Okay. One thing I wanted to update everyone on is negotiations with the unions within the city. We are currently in negotiation with seven unions. Not all of them began at the same time. They did begin in the latter part of 2020 and are continuing. Those unions are fire, police, DPW, central maintenance, which is a new contract, and the S-Union, which is supervisors and so forth. It's actually technically SSE-A. And the clerical union and dispatch. Dispatch is the last one to sign on. I don't know if we even have a scheduled date yet on that one, but they have let us know that they want to begin their negotiations. And of course, once the contracts are done, they will be shared with this body, so the city council. Up to that point, all negotiations are conducted in executive session by agreement of both parties. And we will certainly share with you what the end result of those negotiations are. I would say by and large, although they do take up a big chunk of everyone's I say everyone on the city side, that is Chief of Staff Danielle Laterno and HR Director Diana Laterno. I am at as many of those sessions as I possibly can be, but there's certainly times when I can't be there. But they are doing a great job on behalf of the city. The next thing I would like to share is regarding ARPA and the funding. We are planning a public information session in mid-September, likely the third week. Have to consult our calendar and just make sure that we allow enough time to both prepare for it and, and then find the right date. But it looks like it'll be at some point in the third week. And that will be when we would both explain the ARPA funds. We certainly shared some information with Ways and Means tonight. And when I say explain the ARPA funds, we currently are in, our allotment for ARPA, if I can get this correct, is We will receive that money in two payments. The first payment we have now finally received, I'm sorry, the first and second payment for '21, we have now received. We will not receive another one until the spring of '22. The amount that we have in-house right now is $2,579,267 and 2 cents. So that is what we will have available to us. So as I said, I'm looking forward to putting together that public information session and hearing from the public on some of their ideas. I will preface that by saying it is, there are certain restrictions, and we have, well, there's more than certain. There's many restrictions on how we may spend that money within the four categories. So I hope to explain all of that to the public in a way in the, in the very near future that it can be understood. So I'm looking forward to receiving information, receiving ideas from the public. I'm also looking forward to receiving any ideas that the city council wants to put forward. Don't hesitate to do that. Send me an email. I think most of you have, I have shared with you or have asked Ways and Means to share with you as much information as I have on hand in a way that, that you can understand. And I encourage you to review that information about how it can be distributed. And lastly, well, not lastly, but lastly for me, the, I want to remind everybody, you're all invited to the library groundbreaking tomorrow. It is a rain-or-shine event, so we are certainly praying for shine. Doesn't look like we may have that prayer answered, but come anyway. It starts at 10:00 AM. It's in the actual parking lot location where the, where the, where the library will ultimately be built. We look forward to seeing all of you there. We will have people from the NBLC there, and we will have people who have been associated with this project over the years also there and speaking. And then, of course, we'll do a modified groundbreaking, because we're certainly not going to break up any concrete in the parking lot. I would also like to take this opportunity to say that parking lot will be closed from 6:00 AM tomorrow until about, I'm going to say 1:00 PM, but don't hold me to that. It could be sooner or it could be later. So we, difficult to gauge how long the proceeding will be, and then how long it will take the DPW to break down the things that we've asked them to do. Again, with regard to that event, I would like to thank the DPW for the help that they are going to give us bright and early tomorrow morning, if not already. And with that, I would simply say that with regard to the Court Square pilot, we have received certainly a lot of feedback on that, a lot of positive feedback, and a lot of concerns from citizens, all of which we have taken in. We have logged them all. We have already begun to attempt to create, to correct, correct isn't exactly the right word, to address some of the concerns. We want everyone, of course, to know that there is a parking lot in the back that has several 30-minute free parking spaces and has four handicap spaces. It's amazing how many people don't know that's that back there. Once we tell them, they appreciate that information. So, and people have asked for a drop box out there, a drive-up drop box, which I think is a brilliant idea. And we've just, I've just received some information on the types of drop boxes we can have put there. And I'm discussing with DPW Director Marla where we can put that, because that will be useful regardless of whether the Court Square project proceeds or not. It'll be very useful for people, particularly in inclement weather. So I'd like to turn it over to Chief of Staff Danielle Laterno, if I may, to share with you a vision of what could happen in the future. And understand, please, that, I'm sorry, Danny, understand that part of the reason we did this pilot, this is very important, is to know where the pain points are, what the traffic flow issues are, and all of those other issues. So they're all, at some point in time, should this project go forward, they will be taken into consideration. We have received some very valuable information from it.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for your time. I will try and be quick. I created a bit of an ambitious situation here with a PowerPoint that I want to show you. And the reason why I want to show this to you is we're actually going to put this, some of these slides are going to go on the screen that exists in the front of, of the city hall. And I don't know if people remember, there's that electronic screen that shows slides of different things. So we will, after this meeting, put that up with some, with some information. So I'm going to start sharing now. Can you see that? Not yet. Oh, here it comes. Yeah. Here it is. So if you guys can see that, that's just the first, the first slide. But basically, the possibility of creating a pedestrian space in Court Square has been explored by folks in Greenfield and leaders in Greenfield when we started doing research on it as newbies here in City Hall, still somewhat new. It's been as far back as the 80s. So for example, there's some select board minutes from the Jan, January meeting in 1985, where the project was actually slated to be paid for by a state grant. And one of the quotes I saw was then-select board Wendy Sivison said that "the support of the project exhibited a positive progressive attitude." And in a three-to-two vote, so very close, the select board decided not to proceed and not to accept the grant. Court Square improvements were also discussed in the 2003 Downtown Master Plan. That's a long time ago now. And in the 2013 Sustainable Master Plan. And I wanted to sort of scroll over and look at some of these real quick. This is my ambition here. So this one, this is the, one of the reports that I'm going to be showing you guys tonight is here. The Sustainable Master Plan is here. Can you guys mute whoever that is? Thank you. And if you guys haven't reviewed these at all ever, and this goes for the public too, or if you haven't reviewed them recently, I would recommend it. It's really inspiring to see what folks, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago talked about in terms of things that they wanted to see in town. So I just wanted to put a little plug in for you guys to do some reading of these different documents. Okay, so I'm going to go to the next slide. This is, so the images and excerpt, that I excerpted, excerpted are from the Court Square Streetscape Design Report. So I talked about '85, 2003, 2013, and then this is actually from 2018. And this is where we really, the city at the time did have a consultant prepare a project plan for Streetscape Design for Court Square. In that report, there were various improvements that, that were part of it. Oops, sorry, that's what I'm reading off of. And there were lots of goals. And some of the goals included are an attractive environment, pedestrian-friendly, and offers functional space for events of various types and sizes, while accommodating limited vehicular use. Another goal was to improve Court Square as an attractive destination. That includes modern elements such as art installations and green infrastructure, and also to enhance the area's vitality as a place to shop, visit, and work. So this was the goal in 2018. And as you guys know, what, you know, when people are asking, well, why are we doing this now? Why do we, what feels like we sort of rushed into it to some people, some of the feedback we've been getting? And it is, as you know, last year, 2020 was a, was an odd year. And it was a bad year in a lot of ways because of the pandemic. But what happened was the mayor came into office in 2020 with the goal to implement some of these ideas from these various master plans. And then we had the pandemic hit. But that provided an unusual opportunity, because people actually, we had both the funding mechanism for Shared Streets, that Shared Streets grant, and people had an appetite for being outdoors and being outside in a way that we hadn't seen in a while. So the Court Square pilot happened. We blocked it off in July, just prior to the Village Pizza event. And so I just listed a few of these things that have happened or will be happening. As you all know, on Saturdays, the farmer's market happens. We have the Village Pizza 80th anniversary. We had a performance by Matt Kim's Academy of Rock, their annual summer camp, which is called Rockshow. AMR hosted a family fun and day that was also a job fair. We're planning something called Chatty Wednesdays. If anybody is familiar with the TV show that comes from, you'll know what it means. It's really just lunch and/or dinner with strangers. So people were feeling, via the pandemic, they can come, sit outside safely and chat with strangers and make new friends. The Franklin County Perinatal Support Group is actually planning an event coming up soon. We're having the annual harvest supper. We have individual, we have a couple of folks who are residents here of the city who are planning a wedding in City Hall. And then since I put together this slide, we have another event. Community Meals is going to start using some of the space for their weekly community meal programs. And as the mayor said, she is, we are collecting feedback all through this, and I love a spreadsheet, so of course, send a spreadsheet. And we're keeping track of everybody's comments. This is the original proposed layout from the Streetscape Design Report in 2018. And as you can see, this is obviously much more permanent than what we have going on down there right now. But I just wanted to show this. This was designed in 2018 with some traffic improvements, some traffic slowing, and with removable barriers. So one of the things that all designs have in common is that they're able to be removed quickly for either the need for traffic for various reasons or for emergencies. And actually, much easier than it was, and we had a little practice test of this when we had Main Street and Federal Street and Bank Road blocked off for the water main work a couple of weeks ago. And we had to open up Court Square to traffic. And we were able to do that with the help of the DPW and some really big equipment to move the current cement barriers. But this will become faster. We won't need equipment to remove the barriers in a, in a permanent plan. There's a couple of optional concepts. I just want to point out that it says arms block up there, and that is because the consultants always have to put some sort of typo in their pictures, you know? People don't live there. So concept alternative A, this is just a slightly different one. There's more plant life in the middle here. There's cafe seating. There's colored concrete pavers, raised planters. There's alternative B, which has other things, some benches. There's a design grid. There's a different crosswalk location and a pocket park here. And just keep in mind, this, this Streetscape Design Report was created after there was input by, at that time, we had public hearing, public input sessions. And that was also true for the 2003 Downtown Master Plan and the 2013 Sustainable Master Plan. These were all included, many, many, and many, many pieces of public input, including in-person meetings to weigh in. And also planning to do that when and if we go forward with a permanent plan. So here's alternative C, another little pocket park. This one has some different parking and roadway lineups. So you can see that it's flexible, and there's lots of different options. So as we gather feedback throughout this, this season, I'm calling it season because it's not just summer. It's definitely going to be fall, too. We can look into it and see if any of these designs actually work, or if something that's a hybrid of some of these work. So this is a picture from the Village Pizza 80th Anniversary Party. And there were a lot of people in there. I don't know how many of you guys went. It was great fun. And so I just, you know, for the slides that are going to go out front, we want to make sure that they know that the process, because we're working really closely with the Office of Economic and the Office of Economic Development and Community Development, and we're also working with licensing really closely to make sure that, you know, when things need to go to licensing, they do. When we're doing just a Court Square event that doesn't include something for sale, doesn't include a daily alcohol permit, we can also have that just come through the mayor's office for a quick approval process. And we created a very simple application that we're giving to people, just so we can keep track of what they want to do. Here's an image from some of those, those earlier reports that I talked about. It's a painting of what Court Square could look like. And I got this quote off of that report, too. "Court Square will become a more active and vital place that provides a range of contributions to the life and image of downtown Greenfield." So this is another slide that'll be out front, but we can also, you know, share this with everyone. And that is with Matt Kim's Academy of Rock. Those are some teens playing some Queensryche. So if you want to plan an event, you can use it for your meetup, for an art show, wedding, children's events. We're trying to gather some food trucks to maybe have a food truck day. You can also do that, all of that. If anybody has an idea, it is going to be free to use Court Square. There's no, there's no fees. We just need to work with you to make it, make sure it works with the calendar, make sure it works with public safety. You can also just drop in, despite some of the feedback, you know, we do work in this building right here. I look outside in almost every day, although we didn't have a lot of rain in July. There's somebody down there either having a meeting from the co-work space or eating lunch. I've seen people out there eating dinner with their magpie pizza a few nights in a row. So you can bring takeout. You can host an outdoor meeting. You can just bring a book or bring your book club. You don't need permission to do that. This is basically a park that you can drop in on. And here again is the contact information to do that. And that is the end of my slideshow. So figure out how to unshare. So as the mayor said, we are gathering feedback. We're keeping track of it. I lost my, here it is. I lost my WebEx, so.
Meanwhile, that's Danny's happy place.
That's Nicaragua. So this is the 2003 Sustainable Master Plan, so I can stop sharing now. All right, good. Found the button. We are gathering feedback. We are taking that feedback. We are, we are, we are putting it in a spreadsheet with contact people if they don't want to be anonymous. If they choose to give us their name, we're gathering that. We're gathering the different details, all the parts. We will be having a public process for anything permanent and, of course, taking into account all things like safety, traffic, accessibility. And I'm ready for questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that. So I'm going to start with Counselor Mayo, then Counselor Stempel, and then Counselor Elmer. So Counselor Mayo, go ahead.
I think this question is, would be for the Chief of Staff, just because she has been identified as being involved in negotiations primarily. The mayor mentioned that there was seven more unions to negotiate with. Are we talking about contracts that have been requested early to be negotiated? Or, or is that, is that the town that's making the requests?
So I can answer that, yes. Thank you, Counselor Mayo. So that is seven total unions that we're currently negotiating with. And it's a, normally, we wouldn't have that many. But it's a combination of contracts that expired last year, so last year on June 30th, 2020. Every union and the city, we mutually agreed that because of COVID and because of everything going on, we did not negotiate last year. So those are the contracts that expired last year. And we extended a year, and then added to that are the ones that are, have just expired on June 30th of this year.
Okay. One more question, if I may, here. This is a real quick one. It concerns me, you know, regarding the, the, what we want to do with the Court Square. Is the input that I've heard from both you and anybody from the town hall, the mayor, you, is there would be an information session available to the public? Not once have I heard the opportunity for public comment, which is, which is an important difference. Important comment is different than a session. So I want to make sure that, you know, the, the people in my district are, are very concerned about the Court Square about the Court Square and they, they want an opportunity to make public comment, not, not listen to information that's already been decided, so to speak. And that's what, that's what's implied when you say information session. So anyway, that's, that's just very quickly, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
So that's a question. So my understanding is, and Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we will be getting feedback. We will allow for public comment, yes.
Very good.
They did throughout those comments. And so, yeah, I don't, I understand what you mean. I feel like in this case, we were using those two terms interchangeably, but I do want to be clear. There will be time for public comment. But I do want to make it really clear, and I know that often when, and you guys know this, and people who've ever had a job of any type where you talk to the public, you often hear from people who are really, really in love with something or you really, really hate it. And you don't often hear from the middle people. So I really want to hear from the people who maybe are on the fence. Want to know what they, they can tell us now what's going on. And so one thing I do want to make clear, and I hope I'm not overstepping by saying this, Mayor, but the public comment that is coming through now during the pilot, the one thing that's not going to happen is we're not going to take it down right now because people don't like it. We are really going to see this pilot through and work it out and see what happens. If at the end of it, and then we have our sessions and we have our public comment and we work with the designers and/or public safety and/or accessibility experts, and we decide, and we can't do it, it'll be because of that. As the mayor said, it's not, we're going to make accommodations to make sure that the building is accessible to folks who need to come in here.
Right.
And, and so we definitely are going to do that. But if somebody just doesn't like it because they like to drive through.
Right, right. I, I do understand that. One more, one more comment, if, if it wasn't mentioned. If it was mentioned by Counselor Disorga, that'd be fine. Well, I'll let it go. But because I sit on the Commission for Disability Access, there, there has been several questions regarding the access to the park. You know, I know that there's going to be parking in the back of Town Hall or for that. But there are some areas that need to be shored up in terms of, you know, wheelchair accessibility. And not just wheelchair, but mostly wheelchair. But I want to make sure that, that if, if we're going to go forward with this, that it's, it's truly accessible to everybody who wants to use, to avail themselves of the park. So if Jenny didn't say anything about that, I, I know that she, she had worked out a list of things that she was talking or that had to do with that. And if she didn't say that, I wanted to make sure it was said.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Mayo, thank you for that. One of the things, I'm, I'm, I'm very aware of accessibility issues in terms of people other than, than, than wheelchairs. I mean, I have an 85-year-old mother-in-law who lives with us. And I take her out and about in the world. And she sometimes can use a cane. Sometimes if it's going to be more difficult, she will bring the fold-up wheelchair. We have like three wheelchairs, five canes. We go out in the world. Until two years ago, I also had my father-in-law, who was 86 at the time. And my dad was wheelchair-bound at the end of his life as well. So I am very familiar with, it's really interesting when you go out and about with people, especially if they're people who can walk but can't walk far, how hard it is to get around in the world. When it's designed for either wheels and a ramp or fully functioning, you know, people who can still run.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm, I am, I am thinking about that all the while. The plans, according to the 2018 plan, all of those, there's a lot of documentation in there, a lot of words that I didn't show you guys. And a lot of it, most of it talks about grading and leveling of the, of the, of the Court Square area so that it's actually level with the sidewalks. So right now, we have a sidewalk on the edge of Courts, on the edge of the Common. We have a sidewalk up in front of City Hall, and then there's a dip, and then there's the road. It would actually make that better in these plans if they do proceed. So, yeah.
Great.
And then just to point out, there are six, and they've always been there. We didn't add these because of Court Square. And I know people forgot about them even before. But there are six 30-minute spots behind City Hall. The 15-minute spots that were in front were 15-minute spots. These are 30. I work in this building. It is extremely rare, extremely rare that those are full during the day. And then we have three, I'll just correct the mayor. We don't have, we don't have four back there. We have three handicap spots that are closest to the back. And we actually measured, not to be spiteful or anything, but just to kind of gather information.
Yeah, yeah.
It was approximately six feet further than the front handicap spot was when you go door-to-door, ramp-to-ramp.
Okay.
It feels weird. We want to make that, you know, that's not great. We're looking at the new signage and some other things so people can know. We're kind of figuring it out as we go. And anybody, there's a few people who contacted us about signs that we were able to quickly pivot and take some down and put some up. We've already done some of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Luttrell. Counselor Stempel Ray.
Thank you, President Ricketts. Question. So I'm someone who works from home. I know that the pandemic has brought a ton of people who work from home to buy homes in Greenfield because they can work from anywhere in the world and they want to live here. Question is, is GSAT accessible from Court Square? Because get me the hell out of my house and I will perch out there. And is it an intern who puts the tables out every morning?
He's not an intern. So Christian is a city employee now. He was an intern in the mayor's office last year.
Yay. I saw him doing it the other day in his, like, business professional wear. And I was just like, love it.
I'll tell you what.
He gets props from me.
Oh, I can answer. Yeah, I can answer both those things. Number one, Christian is a full-time city employee working in the Office of Economic and Community Development. We love him. He's great.
Well, I'll have to make a meeting with him.
Yeah. So the tables and chairs actually stay out 24/7. But what happens is Christian comes in, and sometimes they get moved at night. And he has taken it upon himself often, without any prompting from anybody else, to move them so that they're not in the way of anybody who wants to access the sidewalks, things like that. So he's doing that because he's, he wants us to succeed and he doesn't want to see, you know, those tables get moved to a spot that would be unsafe or out of the way. So thank you, Christian. We love him.
Thank you, Christian. Yes.
The second part is, yes, thank you for asking about GSAT or internet. We just started in talks with our IT department about how to amplify a Wi-Fi signal out there. As you guys may remember, several years ago, we had green light as a pilot. And then, you know, it kind of expired and it still hangs out, out there. We're talking to GSAT and our IT department on how to make that work the best. And my hope is that this will happen very soon. So not yet, but I hope so.
Yeah, I just think that's a perfect opportunity. And then lastly, you mentioned the 80s. But I'm a Greenfield history buff, and I just love back in the day, 1900s. Obviously, cars, cars have kind of taken over, but I think cars are kind of going away. And back then, people were always in Court Square. People were always downtown. And friends and, friends and I used to have like arguments over, is Boston a walking town or is Boston a car town? And I think Greenfield is more and more becoming a walking city. And change is hard. And I think you all are doing a great job facilitating the change management of it all. ADA is really important, but I'm going to be the unpopular opinion and say, we hear about it all the time and we get it, you know? So people can be as mad at me as they want. It's obviously important. And we're not, I say we, you guys are clearly not, not paying attention to that. And it comes up at every meeting. We'll figure out ADA because it's of the utmost importance. It's not a reason not to do this.
And it's the law, too.
And it's the law, but it's also, it's also a value of the city of Greenfield. So I, it's not enough for me to keep hearing this ADA argument because we're working on it. We're figuring it out and it's important. And I love the fact that you're getting feedback from, from citizens. That's constructive and giving you better ideas to make this work for everybody. And so keep those things coming because without group collaboration and, and contribution, it's not going to be great for everybody. And I think, like to your point, you said something like, oh, the, the Dropbox for the back parking lot. Brilliant. Kudos to whoever's idea that was. Keep sending your great ideas because this is how we make Greenfield better for everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Counselor Elmer.
Hi, Danny. I have two questions. The first has to do with Hawks and Reed, which I thought of when, before the pandemic as, as the crown jewel of, of Greenfield's nighttime entertainment. Is there any problem with them using that space for outdoor concerts? Because I got the impression there was one.
No. So we've been working with them. We've had a few meetings with them about how to best configure the space. So currently, what happened with Hawks and Reed is they have, they've not really been open yet is part of the problem. So they're still working. They had, they had the skate park fundraiser. And I think if you were down here for that, you saw people using Court Square to kind of let that, that event spill out. They did take advantage of the modified and streamlined access to extending your liquor license outside. So, so right now, they have the ability at present to actually put tables out there, open their bar, have an event, and have people sit outside and actually do things out there now. So they do have that ability currently. We're working with them on how to best do that in a way because the farmer's market does have dibs on that space every single Saturday morning. And so we're trying to figure out how it can work for them to have tables and chairs out there on the regular without being in the way of the farmer's market. The farmer's market is working with them, too. Like, everybody's playing nice in the sandbox, but at the, at present, they haven't had that many events yet. So, so, yeah, expect that very soon.
Okay. And the second part, did I hear you mention bollards?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think this, this is more like a comment. I, I think of those as stainless steel things that come out from the ground and then can be lowered down. Rockefeller Center uses them so that they can close off their street one time a year so it stays private. If that's the ultimate design, I could feel much better about it because my sense of... Yeah, well, it's very different from what people are seeing and what they're imagining. I ride by that park every day, a couple of times a day. It is actually rarely used by more than one or two people. There's a guy I think of as William Burroughs, who's always out there. You know, I don't think it looks good that we create a space and block off parking and cut off people's normal routes for William Burroughs. And if, and if it was a baller that could go up and down and the street might actually be used most of the time for traffic, I think a lot of the issues would disappear. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
I would like to address Counselor Elmer's comment, if I may, President Ricketts.
Yes, please.
And I think then, unless other counselors have questions.
Counselor Gilmore does.
Yep. I just want to say, as Danny pointed out earlier, we are there nine hours.
Fifty hours a week.
Hours. Eyes on the Common, nonstop. I make it a point of that. There's often way more than one or two people in the Common on any given day, at any given hour. And the more it's out there, the more people are using it. And as we said, the community meals people from the church next door have asked on their Tuesdays and Wednesdays if people can sit in the tables. And of course, they can. It was nice of them to ask, but they really didn't need to ask. It is there for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gilmore, then Counselor Dolan.
Yeah, so I had asked about this, and I can't remember if it was at the last meeting or the meeting before. But I had heard that this was about to become a permanent project. And I feel like my comments were meant with a great deal of contempt. And I'm curious if this is something, because it sounds like from Director Luttrell's presentation that this is something that was going to happen regardless of any input. And I don't understand why we couldn't have talked about that before because when I'm fielding these questions from constituents, I don't have any answers other than what we get in these meetings. So the last time I asked about this, I was told that it was just a pilot project and that was just a rumor. And I, I mean, I felt a little disrespected by how it was handled, but I mean, we can, we can leave that aside. But if this was not a rumor, I, I wonder why I didn't have a chance to talk to my constituents in any kind of like productive, constructive manner about this project, for one. Second, I'm really concerned at the idea that just because people aren't happy with this, we're going to move forward. Because I feel like everybody who lives here in Greenfield has a right to have their vision for what happens in our town. And if they don't like it, they're the ones who are footing the bill. I mean, they should like it. I know not everyone is going to like everything, but the, the feedback I'm getting is overwhelmingly negative. And if you have positive feedback that you're tracking, I'd really like to see what people are saying that's positive. Who's saying it? How many folks are saying it? Because that's not the sense that I'm getting from hearing my constituents.
Thank you, Counselor Gilmore. I don't know which meeting you were at where you felt disrespected. But I apologize if that was the case. That's not something that we intend to do. I can address your concerns real quick. So a pilot program by, by definition is something we're trying out to see if it'll work. And this presentation, I don't want you to make it seem like we're assuming this is a foregone conclusion and that we're going to do it no matter what, because that's not exactly what I said. What I was trying to say is that this isn't a new idea that we pulled out of the sky this year. This is something that people have been talking about in Greenfield for years. And it just hasn't been piloted yet. The pilot is the time where we hear the feedback. We iron things out and then do decide if it can go forward or not, if it should go forward or not. What I said earlier about what we're not going to do is take it down is I meant during the pilot timeframe. If, if the feedback and the analysis by the experts in ADA, the experts in traffic and all of those folks, as well as public comment, if the conclusion is that we won't do it, we won't do it. I just want to make sure that people know that, you know, counting the number of negative comments that come through, especially on social media, which was not around in 1985, although I do have a good selection of letters to the editor about the project from 1985. So social media aside and, and comments that come in, we're, we're keeping track of those, of course. But we're not going to have a meeting in, you know, September 1st and say, you know what? Everybody hates it. We're going to take it down. That's what I meant by that. I didn't mean that it's a foregone conclusion and that we're going to do what we want. I apologize if that was the, the impression you got. It's, it's really not. And then the third thing is, yeah, so like I said earlier in the presentation, is that, you know, as we know, people usually do feedback. Like, if you think about Yelp or any of these services where they do reviews, it's usually people who really hate something or really love something. And as far as the feedback we've gotten that we're logging, which are people walking into City Hall, calling and emailing, it's, it's those two extremes. There's not a lot of people who are kind of neutral on it. So we do have people who love it. And usually, those people are folks who have, there's folks who have businesses downtown who like it. And then it includes some folks who actually were probably involved in either one of these three plans from before. So they actually probably have more information than the average person driving by about what it is we are trying to do. And I do realize how hard it is for people to get, you know, to know that. And I, I, I know that not everybody has been paying attention and reading the 175-page documents from 2013. And I get that. So that's why we're putting these slides up to make sure that people can see while they're down there what's going to be happening, what, what the impetus was for this. It's not something we just make up. Public information and public education on where this came from is a big thing. And this is part of why I wanted to present this tonight at the city council meeting for you guys. And I actually asked the mayor, can I do this? So I thought, you know, there's a lot of people that don't know where this is coming from and what it is and why the heck we would put, you know, planters and barriers up.
So I have, I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
So you're talking about getting the people in the middle. And I, I got what you're saying. People love things and they hate things. They feel motivated to contact their city councillor, to contact the mayor's office or, you know, whoever. My concern there is if you're going to have these meetings in mid-September, I don't know that people in the middle would feel motivated to attend meetings. I think it's still going to be the same crowd. You, are, are you planning on doing like some kind of survey? Like something that's going to go out by mail or?
Yeah, I'm not sure yet. The mayor has her hand up. She may have some more ideas about that.
Okay.
It's the ARC meeting that's in mid-September. It's not this, the project will go till, till the farmer's market ends, which can be varied depending on weather. So it's through October. We'll categor, we'll, we'll look at all of the feedback that we've got. look at all of the feedback that we've gotten, pro, con and otherwise. And then we, I mean, this isn't even funded yet. The goal is not to have it be funded off the, as part of the taxpayers' burden. So we will look and assess this information. And once we have, and we will continue to take feedback even after the program is over. And yes, a survey could be one of the vehicles or so forth. But it will be a very planful rollout if it is decided to go forward and we actually are able to fund it.
Okay, so is this going to be?
Thank you.
So is this going to be ARPA funds instead of a capital request?
I have not funded it yet. We don't know yet. Yeah, we don't know yet. There's grants, there's, you know, we've, we've received and you should have that information. We've received many grants from the state with regard to, with recovery dollars. I don't have any reason to believe they won't continue to come for a little while. So we haven't identified a funding source yet. It probably will be more than one funding source. So we have not identified it yet.
Yeah. And the current funding source for the current, like the planters and the furniture and things you see is shared streets that were part of the recovery. So it's going to be a slow, it's going to be probably painfully slow in some ways to some people, the process, because that's how we want to do things. And it'll probably take, knowing these kinds of processes, we'll have this season through the pilot. Winter will come, we'll re, we'll be evaluating the, the feedback that we got kind of organically and start planning the next phase, which will be public meetings, talk, conversations, presentations and feedback that way, as well as working with the Commission on Disability Access, working with, you know, downtown groups, working with the Sustainability Master Plan Implementation Committee, working with, you know, everybody really. So yes, if, if, and if she, Counselor Gilmore, if you have folks from Precinct Six who are, who are concerned and want any more information and you want it, you know, have, I can share some of the older, the plans that I spoke about, the 2003 plan, the 2018 downtown plan. I don't know if people are interested in reading that or if it, you can help me figure out if, if it's helpful to send that to people or if it's just, if we should just listen and log those.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dolan?
Yeah, just quickly, it seems like a lot of this conversation comes down to a group of people saying it gets used and a group of people saying it's not. I was just wondering if there's any plan for collecting hard data on that. It seems like even if you just looked out your window five times a day and set an alarm, you could really document that people are using it, because I think they are.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And I wish we could, maybe, you know, you might be able to do that. I just, I'm thinking about capacity of who would do that. You know, like I said earlier, Christian has taken it upon himself to, to fix the furniture in the mornings and that's not, that's, I mean, again, this is a pilot without funding and without a staff person. We don't have event staff. We don't have people to do that. Perhaps the administrative assistant in the mayor's office would want to poker head out once in a while and count. I bet she would. She's probably watching right now, Caitlin. We could probably do that. I don't think, I'm just worried that if we, I don't want to do it poorly, you know? So anecdotally, we walk through, I see, I'm always excited when I see people I haven't seen before down there. I think the co-work space people are using it a fair amount to get out of the building. Let me think about that, Counselor Dolan, and see if there's a way we can accurately count who's using it.
I understand either way.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. So any counselors have any questions for the mayor or Director Letourneau? Yes, Counselor Bottomley.
Yeah, I'm going to switch gears a little. I had a question for the mayor, and this is regarding, we got a couple of emails in a different format than usual. I'll just call them disappearing emails for the moment. They probably have a better name. But we get these emails and they say, what is it? Says you have, you do not have the option to forward, copy, print or download. And then it says contents expire at a certain date. And that just concerns me because I know with public records requests, I wonder what happens to those emails. Are they saved somewhere? And I'm wondering why you feel the need to use that format as opposed to just your regular email.
That's a good question. It's still the regular email. It is, there sometimes documents that are shared with the city council that need to remain confidential for a certain period of time. So I mean, it's pretty rare that we use the confidential mode. But from time to time, we will use the confidential mode. And we do try to limit the length of time. So once the length of time is passed, I mean, that email is always available to the IT department and to anybody else. But that is why that is done. And once the deadline time is gone, then it is fine to share or utilize it. But it's just a, a matter of, of needing to maintain a certain level of confidentiality for whatever the email is.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can just piggyback on that for Counselor Bottomley. The IT department does have a full record of all the emails sent, even if they're in confidential mode. However, if somebody does a public records request and there's something that's contained in there that is certain types of confidentiality, like attorney-client privilege and things like that, we don't release those, that we'll redact it. But we have a full accounting of all that stuff. Kind of interesting how they save it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other counselors? Questions for the mayor or Director Letourneau? Okay, so before we move on, I just have one comment. And I just want to give my thanks to Director Warner and the DPW staff for all that they've been through with the burst pipes. It was just something I kept reading about on social media until it happened to me the other morning, but it didn't even last more than a half an hour. And so just thank you for all your quick response, all the hours you and your entire staff has been working on these pipes. So it's been great. So let me go to Counselor Gilmore and Counselor DeSorda.
Sorry, this is a completely unrelated topic, but I did have someone reach out to me and ask if we could get an update on the trees on Main Street. There were some healthy trees that were slated to be taken down or requested to be taken down. And they wanted to know what the status was.
Oh, are you, I think that was directed at me, Counselor Gilmore. Is that correct?
Whoever is the most knowledgeable on the topic is fine.
That would be me. That would be me. And I appreciate all the emails I've gotten. Many, many emails from the public, so thank you for those. Well, if anybody knows me, and many of you do, you know that I am a big fan of trees, particularly street trees in Greenfield. Imagine my surprise to wake up one morning a few years ago to find nine trees completely obliterated across the street from my own home and three-foot stumps left there. So that's when I realized that I needed to become involved in at least trees. So if you know me, you know that five trees will never come down on Main Street. I have not made a decision yet. I have, I think I have come to a decision, but I want to have a discussion with Paul Newell, our tree warden. And he was on vacation last week. He has jumped back into the flame of the DPW, and he's been very busy. So we have yet to set a date. I'm hoping that we can set a date for Friday. But it'll be, it'll be soon when I, when I make the decision. But no, we are not cutting down five trees on Main Street. There are some other options, but I want to hear from him what those options are.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor DeSorda, and then, okay, yep, Counselor DeSorda.
Good, good evening. Mayor, I was just wondering if you could give us an update on the COVID numbers and any plans that you have for that? Are we having any extra vaccine clinics or anything? Thank you.
Oh, well, that's interesting. We had an EOC meeting today. Normally our EOC meetings are on Thursday, but we cannot have it tomorrow morning. So we have an EOC, when I say that, that's Emergency Operations Command Team or the Incident Management Team. It goes by that, by that term as well. And that consists of the Health Director, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Chief of Staff and myself. And any other related people that need to be in that meeting that are associated with the COVID response. So we are monitoring the numbers. We have certainly had a increase in numbers in the last three weeks. We tend to, we tend to try to use a three-week timeframe to decide where we're at, what we might do. And we discuss the possibility of at some point in the very near future, doing not a mask mandate, but a strong recommendation and requirement, well, a strong recommendation to continue to wear your masks when you, if you are unvaccinated or even if you are vaccinated, but particularly if you're unvaccinated, when you're in a public space inside a building, whether it's your grocery store or a shopping venue, retail store, or even City Hall. We will make a decision shortly on whether or not we will require masks in City Hall. Our people in City Hall are very protected with the plexiglass that remains up and probably will from now on. Most are vaccinated, I believe. But we still feel like coming from the outside should, should be wearing masks in City Hall. We have not made that decision 100% yet. And by the way, if anything, if we do anything, I'm sorry, if we do anything, it will most likely be a temporary thing. We're not 100% condensed because our, our numbers relative to the rest of the state are fairly low. It was just a fairly rapid increase that caused us some concern. Anything that we do would more than likely be temporary.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other counselors? Okay, so at this time, I just thank the mayor, Director Letourneau, and again, Director Warner. And let's go to public comment if you're willing, if you want to speak. Make sure your name and address is in the chat box. I'll start with Sandy Thomas, then Dave Lewis. Sandy Thomas?
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm on Orchard Street, for the record. I have no compelling reason for the rationale for changing the number of signatures required for referendum. It shouldn't be harder for our residents to vote and to be having their voices heard if they don't agree with the decision that's made by the council. I believe the number of signatures currently required in the original charter should remain the same. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Dave Lewis, and then Donna Fessinger. Dave? David, I just don't see you on my screen, but are you here, Dave? All right, so I'm going to go to Donna Fessinger, and then I will come back to Dave Lewis.
President Rick just knew, let Mr. Lewis know he is muted.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, do you hear me now?
I hear you now. All right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, on August 16th, I submitted two group petitions to the clerk who forwarded on to the council. Lots of people are calling us at this time. We have over 120 signatures and we're still getting phone calls from people who want to sign our petitions. Pursuant to the placement of barriers blocking off Court Square, the following group petition is submitted for required action by the town council. We, the undersigned voters of Greenfield Petition, the Town Council to maintain the configuration and dimensions of Greenfield Town Common and all its abutting public roadway access as it existed as of January 1st, 2021. And so far, we've submitted 120 names and we're still having people calling us. Also, the second one is pursuant to provision section 7-6B of the Greenfield Town Charter. The following group petition is submitted for required action by the Town Council. The charter of the town of Greenfield hereby is amended in section 2-6C rules of procedure by striking subpart 3 in its entirety and replacing it with the following language. All sessions of the Town Council and every committee or subcommittee thereof shall at all times be open in-person public attendance, except in cases of declared local or state public health emergency or a natural or man-made disaster which renders such sessions dangerous to public attendance. Whenever in-person public attendance is not possible, all sessions shall be offered as an alternative method to the public to participate remotely, including the use of phone, internet or other available technology. All sessions of Town Council and every committee or subcommittee thereof shall be recorded and made available to the public in ear on GCTV. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, could you just tell me what number High Street you live at?
Yes, High Street.
What number?
54.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you. Donna Fessinger, and then Sandy Kosterman. Donna? Am I on now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Donna Fessinger and I live in Greenfield. The percentage of voters needed to sign a petition should not be increased. There is no valid reason to do so. Petitions are one of the few avenues available for voters to affect change in decisions made by town leaders, decisions that affect everyone in Greenfield. And often, the majority of voters would like changed. If any change is made, it should be to make it easier for people to participate in our town government, have their voices heard and their preferences done. Thank you. Donna, could you give me your address, please?
I prefer not on public. I, I don't feel comfortable giving my street address. I live in Greenfield and I'm in the, the street listing.
This is just, it's just the public record.
It's in the street listing. I'm not going to, I, I don't feel comfortable giving my street address in public.
Kenny, this is, this is Counselor Gilmore. I know that she was...
Sandy Kosterman, could you please give me your address and you can speak. Thanks.
Can you hear me? I can. Thank you, Sandy. Great, okay. Yeah, I tried to put in my address and I don't know if this happened to other people or not, but it did not, it did not go in the box. I'm not really sure what happened, but I live on Barton Road in Greenfield.
Thank you so much, Sandy.
You're welcome. Okay, I wrote this letter, email today to the city, city councilors, and I'm not sure if you received it or not, so I'd just like to read it to you. Having worked on several citizens' petitions, we know how difficult it can be to get signatures. It's even more difficult now with the COVID-19 virus and the variants that are raising numbers. People are not going to open their doors or stop to talk in a parking lot or on the street to sign a petition. We don't think that the committee, the A&amp;O committee, even gave this any thought. As comparison, to keep it simple, 318 signatures were needed in 2019 for the library petition versus 900 signatures proposed from the Appointments and Ordnance Committee. That's almost tripling the signature count and making it happen in 23 days. The proposed number, which would almost triple the number of signatures, is not doable in today's world with the president, present pandemic. Citizens' voices should be heard as the counselors and mayor are working for us as taxpayers. And this is one of the very few ways we can make our voices heard. Also, voters in section 7-8 referendum should have 37 days to gather signatures. The extra time gives the city lawyer five days to review the language. The city council shall, should want to hear from its constituents. Don't make our right to speak out harder. If the proposed change is made, agendas will be pushed through and we will have no recourse. If the proposed change is made, agendas will be pushed through, and we will have no recourse. Elected officials have made mistakes in the past and will make mistakes in the future. This is our system of checks and balances against a handful of elected officials. Given that we are in the middle of a pandemic, and medical doctors have said new variants could continue each year like the seasonal flu, we would say leave the number of required signatures as is. It's not the time to change the number. Also, regarding the A&amp;O proposed change to the city charter, Article 1, Section 1-7, Paragraph 0, or actually, it's Paragraph O, I think, definitions, we oppose the word "changing" from "voters" to "voters and resident aliens," which is too broad. Including the words "resident aliens" is a kick in the teeth to all people who came here legally and worked hard to become citizens. We believe the change should be voters and American citizens who can vote and hold office in the city of Greenfield. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much.
This is a letter, a letter that was sent to all of you today from my husband Charlie and myself.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It was received.
Thank you.
Gary Halliwell?
Yep, hi, I'm Gary Halliwell. I'm out of 53 Maple Street in Greenfield.
Thank you.
And I just want to pretty much reiterate what Donna and Sandy have expressed elegantly about the issue with the votes, because certainly, certainly, we want it to, our voices heard and let everybody's voice speak loudly, and hopefully, it'll be a good, good thing for Greenfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Gary. Pamela Goodwin?
I am here, one second, please.
Take your time.
I'm trying to get on video. I hate this not-on-video thing, so I'll be right with you. Oops, well, I guess I look like I'm in the dark, which is common. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the city council. I'm in Precinct 6, I'm 54 High Street, and I guess my biggest concerns are, as a person who's been on the Housing the Homeless for quite a few weeks, I'm a little concerned that, and I also attended the A&amp;O, I was unable to attend the August 16th meeting. So I keep listening, and I liked what Counselor Gilmore said about our input seems to be like falling nowhere. So I guess one of my questions is, in terms of the petition, do we have access to look at all of the different data that's come in, that's in an Excel chart? I know you don't answer my question, but I guess I'm wondering how transparent that is, and I appreciate Counselor Elmer's viewpoint, because I do think there are a lot of people who are opposed to it. So also, I would like to think that some of this money that's coming in could be spent on mental health, possibly community police. I don't know whether you're getting money somewhere else for that, but hopefully, we have community policing going on. I'm pleased that it's out of the school system, and I don't know what happened to the porta potty. We spent a good portion of a night talking about public toilets. Shelburne Falls is working on a public toilet system, at least in the planning stage. So there's a lot of things that, that money can be spent on, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't go to some commercial development, but I'm very concerned, as a former CNA and a former person working in halfway houses, that we have to deal with problem-solving some very significant post-COVID problems in the city of Greenfield, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Pamela. Would anyone else from the public like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, I thank you all for speaking, and we'll continue on. Public hearings and second readings, we have none. So we'll start with motions, orders, and resolutions. So Counselor Forgie, from page 13, if you want to just explain the GMTA to the rest of council, I think we, we might have all got it, or maybe it was just you and I, I'm not sure.
I believe the whole council got a copy of the research that I did, and that was sent along in July. I, I was also mayor at a time when we put together a plan so that we would have one transportation authority in Greenfield, and at that time, it was arranged with the help of Senator Rosenberg and mediator from Boston, and a lot of other folks, where the Franklin Regional Authority would buy out the GMTA and would take over all the assets except the garage. And the garage had to stay because it was being used at that particular point to house all buses, and it would be used in the future to have, house the, the FRTA buses.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was speaking about that we, we wouldn't be discussing this tonight, correct, by the mayor's email?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I, I think right now, where we're at is it's, it's take from the table, the authorized sale, so that's, that would be the motion.
All right, so the mayor sent an email to, to us saying that they're still working on this, and they would like us to wait till September, but did you want to just go ahead with this, or?
No, that's okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking me for. So if, okay, so the decision is the mayor would like us to just leave it on the table, leave it, leave it.
Right, so, all right.
Is that what, is?
That was what the email was for, yes.
Okay, is that what the council wishes to do?
Okay. Do you want to, well, you'd have to read the whole motion if you want them to do something else and not. Clerk Scott?
May I make a recommendation, President Ricketts?
Please.
If the council would like to abide by the mayor's request to leave this on the table until September, a motion could be made to take it from the table, and then if councilors wanted to leave it on the table, they would simply vote no, to take it from the table, if that would be acceptable to the council.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Forgie, would you like to read that motion on page 13?
I can do that.
Okay.
Order number fiscal year 22-011. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number fiscal year 22-001. Upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergartner, that it be ordered that city council authorizes the Greenfield-Monague transportation area to sell 382 Deerfield Street, assessors map 15-4-0, under their authority as the owners of the property, which is, was tabled at the July 21st, 2021 city council meeting, majority vote required.
Do we need a second?
If somebody wants to second it.
That's correct.
Okay, not hearing a second? This will stay on the table. Okay, the next one will be page 14, and this will be Counselor Forgie for the Pan Am Railways?
Yes, order number fiscal year 22-004. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergartner, and in accordance with MGL Chapter 30B, Section 12B, ordered that the city council approve a three parentheses 20-year contract between the city of Greenfield and Pan Am Railways. Majority vote required.
Second, Disorder. Okay, thank you, we have a second from Counselor Disorder.
Forgie, were you able to speak about this that week? President Ricketts, we did, we did just discuss this in our previous meeting, Ways and Means. There is a memo that's attached from our DPW superintendent. There is also a copy of the contract that is attached to this motion as well. The committee reviewed, and it was a positive unanimous recommendation coming out of Ways and Means to approve this motion.
Okay, thank you. Do any councilors have any questions or comments for Counselor Forgie or Director Warner or the mayor?
President Ricketts?
Yes, Counselor Elmer, right?
Yeah, I'll just note that according to the contract, the name of the company is Pan Am Southern, and maybe we should have that right. No, doesn't matter. Never mind.
Okay, thank, no, thank you for that. Okay, any questions or comments? Counselor Forgie, for whatever reason, I couldn't see you at the last two meetings, and I have two of you on my screen tonight, so. Oh, that's why. Yes. So, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hershelm?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Stane.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes, I'm.
The motion passes by majority with one abstention.
Okay, my Chromebook is plugged in, but it's still telling me I have six minutes left. I don't know why, but I'm just going to get my phone ready, just in case. All right. Let me see, mayor's appointments, Counselor Gwynn?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Susan White, Public Safety Commission, term expires June 30th, 2023. Ellie Mandell, Crossroads Cultural District Committee, term expires after completion of the project.
Thank you for that second. Okay, it's made seconded. Counselor Gwynn, do you have anything to add to this?
I'll just, we, the resumes and the requests were omitted from the A&amp;O packets or weren't received until then, so we did not make any recommendation, and I asked for this to be moved to full council floor, and since then, as you all know in your packets, we received the information from the mayor's office, and you have it here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so have a roll call vote on these two appointments?
Actually, President Ricketts, I did have a question.
Yep, we're going to separate these. Yes, Counselor Gilmore?
I wanted to bring this up during A&amp;O, but Counselor Gwynn saw fit to table it because we didn't have the resume, and I completely agree with that decision, but I wanted to ask, so the expiration date is the end of the project, and I'm curious, when is the project expected to end? I know that sometimes this can be a little hazy, but if we had a ballpark figure, I'd appreciate it.
So you're directing that to the mayor, correct?
Whoever has the information.
Counselor Gilmore, I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you. I'm happy to get an answer for you. That language was either missed by me, I don't know exactly what it, what it relates to, per se. I do know that the Crossroads Cultural District does, from time to time, do different types of projects, so I think what it's basically saying is, this person, there's a, there's a vacancy that needs to be filled on the commission, and this person would basically serve until the various projects that the Crossroads Cultural District participates in are completed. I don't know that there is a stated end to this particular committee, so that's the best I can do. I'm certainly happy to research that for you, I'm taking a note right now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we want to take these one at a time?
I don't know if we can, because it's not, it's written on the.
As one order?
As one motion.
And we, we have not been doing that as a general rule.
That's good. Madam Clerk?
Point of order, we did decide we were going to take these individually, because there was a person that raised some red flags for some of the councilors not very long ago, so I thought we were all doing these appointments individually.
No.
Madam Clerk?
It's my understanding that if someone contacted A&amp;O or the people beforehand and said that they wanted them considered separately, then they would be considered separately. However, to my knowledge, in this case, no one reached out to the office at least, I can't speak for Counselor Gwynn or President Ricketts to make mention of that.
I received nothing. Counselor Gwynn, the same with you?
Correct, and yeah, the procedure that we instated after the last questions was, if anyone had a question about any of the candidates that were, get it to A&amp;O before the meeting, and then I would find out the information, and if needed, we would separate it for that vote, and we have not had that situation, and I did not receive anything on these, either one of these affirmances.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
Hartman, Terry, and Roberts, have his hand up.
Okay, yes, I don't see him, but go, go ahead.
If you wish, and it would make everybody comfortable, you could move to separate it into two motions.
I don't feel like I need to make that motion. I just wanted it on the record that we did talk about this a few months ago, that's all.
Understood.
Okay. Madam Clerk, one more time.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
I think, did you say my name, Kathy, because it didn't come across? Um, yes.
Counselor Gwynn? Thank you. Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo? You're on mute.
Abstain?
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Hershell?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgji?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes with one abstention.
Okay. Page twenty-seven, Counselor Gwynn?
May I, President Ricketts, this is Counselor Stempel. May I please, I couldn't no chat, but maybe you didn't see it. Can I just make a comment before I move on?
Comment after the vote. Yes, go ahead. I'm so sorry.
No, you're totally fine. I just feel like every single time, and I know that Counselor Gwynn can attest to this, every single time we move to vote appointees, we have, I don't want to say the same counselors, but the same counselors posing the question of why they're lumped. Can we please not do that? Like, we did that to have a process that's smooth and I feel like we know the process. We go over it every month. If you have an objection to anybody who's listed, to either email the President or Chair Gwynn and then we can move forward. I just, we create processes to make the council be more efficient and it's really frustrating when either people forget or they're not paying attention. And so, I just really want to make sure that we know the process. If you have questions about the process for appointees, ask tonight. So, when we move forward for the rest of the year, we know how it works. It's just really frustrating.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Who's, oh, Counselor Mayo. I didn't see you in chat, sorry.
I do have an answer for that question.
I don't think it was a question. I think it was a comment.
Okay, well, then, okay, then if you don't want me to answer the question or the comment, I won't.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Stempel's shaking her head no because she didn't have a question, so I'm just not sure.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, so. Counselor Gwynn? One more time.
All right, so.
Twenty-seven.
I'm moving on to the new item here, yes, okay. I move that if you ordered that the Greenfield City Council directs the following question be placed upon the official ballot at the general election to be held on November second, twenty twenty-one. Ballot question, should the Greenfield City Council seek to amend Section seven dash eight of the city charter to change the required number of signatures for citizen referendum petitions by changing the current charter language from a number of voters equal to ten percent of the total number of voters voting in the most recent biennial city election, but not less than two and one-half percent of all registered voters as of the same date? Two, a number of voters equal to seven percent of the total number of voters registered to vote in the most recent biennial city election that occurred prior to the date when said signatures are filed with the city clerk. Yes or no?
I'll second that.
Who seconded?
Elmer.
Elmer, thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any, okay, what did A and O say?
Yes, A and O, we discussed the, in quite length, seven, eight, and it was a positive unanimous recommendation for the seven percent number to be carried forward. So, moving that forward. So, that was there and there's a lot of explanation that I feel that I could give, but I'll entertain any way we want to handle this because it's an important piece.
Okay, I don't understand my computer. Okay, are there any questions and comments? I don't. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to go to my phone. I don't know why it's gonna die and everything's plugged in.
Any quick outlet need to be reset? Like, is it a vault outlet, like a grounded outlet?
GFI, yeah.
Okay. All right, are there any, Counselor Dolan, I believe?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
This order does not have to go to the voters according to state law, correct? We're choosing to do this as.
Yeah, and that is correct. President Ricketts, while you're dealing with your phone, would anyone object to me working this question answers on this section?
Yeah.
I'm gonna continue. Okay, Counselor Dolan, if I'm wrong, someone tell me, but Counselor Dolan, that is correct. And I'll just start because that was a good question and I want to make sure. We've heard from the public that, you know, maybe the council wasn't listening or that we weren't hearing them. This is exactly the reason that A and O decided to put this on the ballot. I gave this definition to A and O when I was talking about it because it's a check and balance for the council. That, you know, these citizens' petitions, it's another check and balance on us. I thought that it would be in the best interest of Greenfield to let the voters make the decision and not this body, but we could have done it on our own. But by letting it go to referendum, that would happen. So, you are correct, Counselor Dolan. Anything else on that, Counselor Dolan? Any follow-up?
Nope, thank you.
Anyone else, and we can take the rationale like we're doing right now and I can tell you, then I can go into a little more detail because it was quite extensive.
Counselor Gwynn, Counselor Forgji was next on the list.
Counselor Forgji?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that as a member of the Charter Committee, we worked very hard to vent and vet everything that was within the Charter. Some of them are certainly of more interest to people in Greenfield than others might be. Some are just housekeeping pieces and meaning language changes. Some are policy pieces, meaning that they might be spoken about in the Charter, but it's gonna need ordinance to back it up as well. I've heard some wonderful comments. I wanted to say that I spoke with Sandy Kosterman this afternoon. She was the first person to come forward and talk about the effects of COVID and the difficulty in being able to go door to door because a lot of people were, you know, still reeling from what we've been through and a lot of people are nervous about what our future holds. I applaud everybody who's come forward, but there are certain things that I did want to make clear as a member of Charter Committee. When the Charter was first written, what you are debating now was not the threshold. So, people keep saying, this has been in effect since the beginning of the Charter. That number has not been in effect since the beginning of Charter. It was changed during the last mayoral administration. It was changed by the council. So, I am thinking that when you, the other thing is when you compare us to all the other municipalities in Massachusetts, we have the lowest threshold right now that needs to be met. And the thought of the committee was that we want to put a number in place that would be satisfactory, that would not only help people to keep an eye on the council and bring forward the important pieces if there was a disagreement, but we also wanted to have a number that would allow for the council to also do its work. You vet something, you research something, you deal with a lot of these issues. Council works very hard to get it right. A lot of times, it's challenged by the very small number required to file petitions and that just seems a bit arbitrary to me. I'm not saying you don't have the right to object. I'm not interfering with your right to vote. I'm just trying to give you some background information on how we are trying to make this better. So, by putting forth another number and all the discussion that has taken place around us, I'm really hoping that we can come to a compromise, which is what I think was going on with the proposal coming out of A and O. The bottom line is if it goes on the ballot, then voters will not have multiple choices because that's illegal on any ballot, but they will be given the opportunity to say yes, this number is correct, or no, we want to stay where we are. And if the vote fails, then the Charter stays the same and it will stay the same until somebody else comes along, another charter comes along, committee, and files for it to be different. But the intent is to honor the work of representatives. We don't always get it right. US voters don't always get it right. We're trying to honor the work and we're also trying to find the balance and nobody's trying to silence any voters. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Forgji. Let me just, this is, I'm gonna just build back on what you were talking about. So, I just want to go where seven percent came from. So, originally, the Charter, when it first came out, was it in a ten percent bracket? And then it was changed to the format it's in now. The Charter Review Committee came back and they were wanting, their recommendation was to go to ten percent and it was viewed as going from five to ten. And we had a, there was plenty of input of the Charter Review Committee. They had a public input. If you look at the published review committee that came out, it showed input from the public. So, all of that was done. We then had a public hearing and listened to people and from that, I ascertained that maybe five was too low and ten was too high. And in the whole idea of trying to bring the community together, we came up with the alternative of seven percent. So. So, with that seven percent number, it was the idea of finding a number that would work for both seven dash eight and seven, seven. People asked why we didn't make a recommendation for a referendum question for seven dash seven and the reason is it's already seven and a half percent. So, they had mentioned that they would like to see it go to ten and the recommendation came through that we'll just leave it at seven and a half because that's where we're trying to bring seven dash eight. So, seven percent is the compromise. The people that wanted ten are not extremely happy because they thought it should be ten and the people that thought it should stay lower are thinking it's up, but it's closer to the lower side than it is to the higher and it's still not where it was. It's still lower than the original Charter at seven percent. We sent this question, I brought it forward, kind of sponsoring this thing, and we sent it to the attorney for language. So, that's what you see before you tonight is the language that was sent by a town attorney. So, we are correct in that language. So, we are moving in the right direction and that's what seven percent, it was the compromise and that's where we tried to come out of this meeting. Counselor Elmer, did you have some comments?
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes, did I miss somebody?
There are, there are a few counselors prior to Counselor Elmer, I'm sorry, Counselor Elmer. Next.
Under Forgji, right? All right, would that be Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry. Counselor Stempel Ray?
Totally not offended. Actually, yeah, you're like taking the hook in that sign.
I'm so sorry. Can people hear me?
Yes.
You just can't see me, right?
I can see you.
Oh, yes, we can hear you. Okay, thank you. So, yes. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
No worry. Knowledge a blessing and its own curse. I just, Counselor Forgji said most of what I wanted to say, but what I wanted to add is I've served on this council for six years and I pour my heart into everything that I do. It's hours and hours of research, committee meetings, backup meetings, public hearings to do all of the work to understand everything that I vote on. And I know that my colleagues, over the last six years and beyond, do the same level of work. You run a campaign, you make yourself aware on the issues, you make a vote. There's no, it's not democracy when a small minority can take hostage of a community. And so, the threshold that it's at now, absolutely not. I don't think it's appropriate. I think it's way too low. However, I've seen all the emails and I appreciate the community members who are also echoing my sentiments and saying, you know, not quite comfortable with ten. Somebody might need to mute their microphone. We're having a bit of an echo, but.
Excuse me, Counselor Stempel. It's Penny's back feeding through her own microphone, so.
Okay, how about that?
I think we're better now. Go ahead.
But so, long story short, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the comments from the community and their concerns, like, we're not quite comfortable to go to ten and I know a lot of communities are at ten or higher for their thresholds. But I think seven is a great compromise. I saw a lot of community members comfortable with six. And so, I think, I mean, I'm sorry, I saw a lot of emails with eight. I got a lot of constituents emailing eight and so, if we're doing, I'd almost be comfortable even with, you can't do six and a half, but I think seven is a great compromise to get us in a situation where, yes, to everyone else's point, there should be checks and balances and our constituents are the best check and balance. And that's why we have public meetings. That's why we have public hearings. That's why we have all of these formalities in place. But I really, it's really important to me to have a democracy in the City of Greenfield where the work of our elected officials matters and that the residents, while they can submit a petition and bring things to a ballot, they're having to put in the work too. We can all work together to create a better democracy and I look forward to putting this on the ballot. I was gonna, if it wasn't going to the ballot, that's probably the motion I would have made because I want to hear from the community. Are we doing the right thing? I have a hunch that says that they'll agree. My hope is that folks will educate themselves on what it means. We're not stripping away your ability to check and balance the council. So, I hope that's, I hope that's not the narrative that folks will take because it's absolutely not true and it's not fair and not educated if that's what they're sharing. I'm seeing pockets of folks, the same voices again and again and again, trying to run a conversation in this community and it's not a good one. We all serve with our hearts on our sleeves and when I feel bullied and yelled at, I'm not gonna lie, there were some people at the last month's meeting who were just straight screaming at us and because I'm an elected official and all of my 12 colleagues here on this call, because we're elected officials, that doesn't mean you can treat us without respect. We're not here to take that. There's something completely different than serving our community and being abused. abused. Um, and so this changing of, of this number, I, I hope will, will bring us closer together as a community because electeds and residents will have to work harder together in order to make the right product for the city.
Thank you, Counselor Stumpel Ray. Um, a couple of points that, uh, Counselor Stumpel Ray made that, that are true. One being, um, when we looked at our peer areas, um, Amherst, uh, is, got a higher threshold than us. North Hampton has a higher threshold of us by a lot, 15%, 20%. Um, so our number even at 10, when it was there, was already low. The, the proposed 10 would have still put us there. This seven, this compromise, seven and a half would have been a true, uh, cut it in half, but seven, seven was where we went. And the other thing, um, when people were talking about the amount of time in which they collect signatures, I don't want anyone to feel that that's been changed. It's been changed in favor of the voter. Um, by asking the lawyer to reduce to five days and our city clerk's office reducing to two days, it actually gives 23 days to collect signatures, which is a longer period than it is now. Um, for collection of the actual signatures. I'm going to go to Counselor Bottomley, but Mayor, did you have your hand up to send? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thanks, Mayor.
I'm enjoying listening to the conversation.
Perfect. Counselor Bottomley?
Yeah. First I want to thank A and O, uh, for other hard work on this in the Charter Commission. Um, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community on this, and I think it's really important that this goes to the ballot, uh, so that people can vote on it. Um, do you happen to know a rough number of how many people seven percent is?
Um, that, our, our town clerk, um, might have that number because it would be seven percent from the last, um, from the voter list. So Kathy, are you?
Give me one minute. I don't have, I don't have the numbers from the last annual election, but I can go off of the rough numbers currently.
So this is Counselor Gilmore. I actually know that number. As of February 1st, seven percent would be 893 people.
About 900.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Gilmore.
Could I clarify one thing? It's, it's, uh, seven percent of the total number of voters, registered voters, not who voted in the last election. The other change.
Yes. And my numbers are based on, I looked it up on the Secretary of State's website because I was responding to a constituent and it was 893 people as of February 1st, 2021, which was the most recent data that was available.
And I, I would agree with that. Um, I know that we have at least 12,400, we have more, but at least 12,400 voters. Um, so I would agree with Counselor Gilmore's estimate.
Counselor Bottomley, did you want to continue?
No, that's it. That's good.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Bottomley. Um, Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes, I, I was, uh, involved, uh, before I became a counselor, uh, with the biomass petition, which, uh, I think we, we got, uh, we had it, we had to do it in the middle of winter. It was like December and we got, I'm not sure if it, it seemed like it was about a thousand or maybe more signatures. And, uh, it was an important vote. I, I remember that, but I would support seven percent. I also would support if we could make, uh, the 23 days longer to either 30, 30 days or, or longer. Um, and my reason for that, I know it's not part of this motion, is that, uh, given the problems with COVID and in the winter, it's tough. It's tough to, I'll tell you, it's tough to get signatures in the winter. So, uh, that would be my suggestion for what it's worth.
Thanks. No, thanks, Counselor Hirschfeld. Just to reiterate, 23 days of actual collection is going to be longer than it is presently, uh, in the makeup of that. Also, anything we say this evening on this vote, this only, we're only voting to put it on the ballot to, um, the public in the next election. From that point, it still has to go with all of the other, uh, votes we, uh, recommend to change on the charter. It then goes to the mayor. The mayor then gives it her approval, um, that she's, has no objections. Then it goes to the legislature and they have to approve it. So this will not come back in, in like six weeks. Um, you know, this is going to be two years it took the last time, uh, you know, almost to get the charter amendments back. So I would hope that COVID is long behind us, Counselor Hirschfeld, but I thought that this month. So, well, you know, um, but, but no, this is not a quick process. And this, the only reason we're moving this right now is because we want to get it on the ballot if that's the direction you all choose. Counselor, um, Elmer?
Thank you. Uh, I guess I want to sort of echo, uh, what Counselor Hirschfeld said. I, um, I take the letters asking for six percent like it's the, the fate, the, the fate of democracy is at stake if we don't get it six percent. I take those with a grain of salt. I feel very comfortable with seven percent. Uh, I do hear though, the complaint that, uh, it's, I, I know that collecting signatures is hard and, and I would like this, uh, to pass. I would like the voters to vote affirmatively on this. And I, and I would tend to be more generous on the timing, uh, to make that happen.
Yeah. Not to interrupt you, but the timing is not part of our ballot question.
That's right. And, and we did not just, we, we did discuss the timing, but we didn't make any recommendation on the timing.
Correct.
And I hope we can come back to it. And I would, uh, suggest maybe we make it generous and make it 40 days, like 40 days and 40 nights. And, and I don't think anybody can complain about that that's not enough time. They may yet, but, uh, I think that would make the measure more popular. We'll come back to that later.
Counsel, that's what I was going to recommend, Counselor Elmer. We'll, we'll take that up and we'll look at it and I'll get the legal from, uh, Clerk Scott and find out what can be done. But right now, let's try to stick to the actual question and, and what we have to decide in those pieces. But you are right, Counselor Elmer. Um, Counselor Gilmore, did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
I did. And I know that I put that up right before answering Counselor Bottomley's questions. Why, I understand why you're confused. So I just want to say that I was on the, um, the Charter Review Commission and I'm also on A and O. So this is my third bite at the apple. And then when I go to vote in November, that's going to be my fourth bite. So, you know, that's kind of nice, but I do want to say, I, I've, I've spent a lot of time really thinking about this because I'm someone who I, I don't mind the tedium. I know that these things take a long time, but I'm more worried about getting it right than getting it fast. And as much as I can empathize and sympathize with the folks who are advocating for a lower number, I am happy that this is going to be, or what we've discussed has been a longer timeframe. And I do want to remind people that anytime that you're collecting these signatures, this is citywide. It's not for specific precincts. And having run in my precinct and also running, you know, when I ran for mayor, that was basically at large, just the whole city. It takes a long time to get 50 signatures in one precinct because if people aren't home, then people aren't home. But when you are running at large or collecting signatures for a citywide initiative, you can stand in front of Greenfield's Market, you can stand in front of Foster's, you can have volunteers help you do those things, you can station someone at the post office. And I would like to remind people that there was a counselor who ran at large the last time around, who received, uh, at least 100 signatures, probably more, um, to, to run in one single day. They, they pulled their papers on the morning of the last day to pull papers, got all of their signatures and got them certified by Close of Business in a single day. So that's 100 signatures, which means that if you could replicate that over eight days, you can clear this bar. So I feel like it's doable and I feel like it's doable if the measure is possible. And I do want people to know that I did, like, spend a lot of sleepless nights worrying about this because I don't want to stifle anybody's voices. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Counselor Gilmore. Um, this is, this is unusual. Um, President Ricketts, would you like to speak on this? Did we lose her?
No, she's muted.
Oh, um,
As President, I will hold off. I would like Counselor Jarvis and Stumpel Ray to be able to speak first and I will speak after them.
I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I do, when I, when I, when I first got this report, I, I, I reviewed every one of the questions and stuff like that. Um, and I wrote down the number seven from the get-go. Um, I'm a numbers guy. I hear that people are saying that it's tough to collect signatures. Here, here's the numbers. If 20 folks got together and said, we don't like what the city council did, we're going to collect signatures. That's 45 signatures for those 25, 20 folks to collect in 27 days. That is less than a, a signature a day or, or one, 1.2 signatures a day that they have to collect. I think the 20 people know one, 45 people that will sign a petition for them. Um, I could get 100 signatures in, in a couple of days just because I asked somebody to sign a petition. I don't think the number's unreasonable on, I, I, I don't buy that. I just, it's just another excuse from, from a group of folks that wanted, want to make everybody submit and think that, that we're making it tough for them. We're not making it tough for them. If you don't have 10, 20, 45 friends that'll sign a signature for you, um, I don't know. I don't think it's that difficult. Um, I don't want to hear COVID. COVID's going to be over by the time this becomes fact, I hope.
Hope too.
Um, so that's just my numbers. I mean, 20 people, 45 signatures? Come on, people, let's be real. That's what I have to say. Um, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a, a shooting for the moon. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Jarvis. The other thing that, uh, it reminded me to, that was a, a point.
I was stepping over Counselor Stumpel Ray, I think.
Yep. No, I just, I just wanted to bring up one piece before we go back to, uh, Counselor Stumpel Ray. And that is when we were talking about percentages and the people that are bringing this forward, the big thing is you've got to remember that this percentage, when you, when you have a low percentage, um, it can work the other direction too. This could be something that you want in the town and it's a number that is good and someone can, like, say, build a library with a couple of hundred votes. You know what I mean? Um, so that was where this percentage came from. We have to have the threshold that, that, um, allows people to be heard, but doesn't make it so low that it can change everything we do. Um, so that was where that number came from and seven seems to be, um, the number that, that gives it a, a good amount of attention and, and obtainable number. Counselor Stumpel Ray?
No. Counselor Dolan, you have a point of order.
Yeah, I, I don't recall the council president, um, handing control of the meeting to Counselor Gwen, and I would appreciate it until that time if the council president could lead the meeting.
Thank, thank you so much. Okay. Counselor Stumpel Ray?
I, I'll give you a point of order on the point of order.
Well, no, you, you just talk after every counselor. You can't, you gotta at least let the counselor speak first. Okay.
Um, well, I wanted, I, I wound up pulling Counselor Jarvis because Counselor Gilmore just proved my point with her math. Point of citizens coming together to create a petition against a vote, it shouldn't take you a day. Um, and so that just proves to me that seven percent is still too low. If you can up, if you can up and change the, the will of a 13 body, um, elected form of government, you know, so like, those who are saying that to, to Counselor Gwen's point, to those who are saying that we're trying to take, uh, and, and control a democracy, I think we're trying to make it work for everybody and not a small, small subsequent group of Greenfield. And I think if I, if I have been a part of this process for six years, what I've also seen are groups of people try to manipulate the language and, and punctual errors in the charter, um, to get their way when it comes to submitting petitions. Um, I saw in A and O, when we were trying to figure out how to better draft the language so it was more clear. Um, I, 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 I'm, I'm not going to sit here and, and I don't want to say bow down to citizens because that's not what I think we're doing or what we're not doing, but, but you, the citizens who are trying to say the council by creating a threshold that makes sense for the community, um, and, and to make it mean something when you object to a vote, that doesn't mean that we're trying to take away democracy. We're trying to create a democracy that works. and, and I'm saying a lot of the unpopular things today maybe because I'm just that tired, but it's just, it's one of those things where I'm almost, I'm almost for 10 again. I don't, saying, Counselor, Counselor Gilmore saying like, oh, you could do that in one day and it's been done before because at-large signatures are so easy. Um, it's not supposed to be easy. Governing isn't easy. Uh, it's supposed to be done right, not easy. Um, and so I, I'm almost back to the tent.
Thank you. Let me just check the chat. So much more difficult on my phone. Okay, first of all, I just want to thank all the comments so far from the public and from my colleagues. I just want to say that to the public, your ultimate voice is going to be heard because it's at the ballot box. This is the ultimate way that you absolutely will have your say. Have I collected signatures before? I have. I've had to go out there because I wanted to rezone some property and I did it with three other people and we got everything that we needed to bring to the council. So I do know that it's doable. I'm so excited about the seven percent because in the time of COVID and what's most important in life today, we compromise. This is not an issue or, or a time to beat up on our neighbors and for this to be really bad. So because we were willing to compromise and the people who really wanted 10% kind of stepped down and the people who wanted five said, okay, you know what? Seven's not bad. This feels good. And this is a big step for Greenfield because so many things are always controversial. This is good to have something finally that we can find middle ground on. Now, I'll tell you right now, if seven doesn't pass, I'm going to give you my word right now, that I'm not going to go to legal. I'm not going to file a law, a lawsuit, not going to do anything. I am 200% behind the people. Whatever happens in that ballot box, I promise I will live with that because that's what the people wanted. That's what's most important. So do I think people will be out there collecting? If it's important enough for you to do it and it's something that you really think the council did wrong, you can make it happen. How I would personally do it, just going to give you your hint, I'm going to stand in one place and I'm going to use social media and I'm going to tell you where I'm at. And people are going to come to me if they believe in what I'm saying and they want to overturn something. So I really do believe that this is so doable. So I want to thank everybody for coming out and listening to the process, but I also want everybody to take a moment and realize that this group that worked on the charter has been working on it since January. My heart actually broke some nights when I didn't see that many public out there listening to all the different changes that were being proposed for this charter. This is a city that you love and I see how people have really dug in over this issue, but there were a lot of issues that came up. They were important. I think they were more important than some of the, this that we're talking about tonight. So they did tremendous work and I was sad not to hear more from people, especially when we had the A and O public hearing. We got a whole list of things that were going to possibly be changed in the charter. I mean, I'm glad people paid enough attention to work on this, but I was like, wow, how do we educate people more? How can we help people understand all the work that's really being done? How can we help people understand all the work that's really being done so that they use their voice for everything? Because what you say matters, it truly does. Not just on who you're going to elect, but how you want to see your city run. Now, there were two petitions that have been passed in this week about different issues. And we're going through COVID right now. So right there proves to me when people really want something, they're willing to go out and get it, whether it's a mask up or some whatever. So I'll be at my five, but I want to thank everyone for weighing in. But let's remember, we found something, middle ground. We found something that doesn't have to be a bomb and we have to beat each other up about. This is so good that we compromise for once. Let's just live with that for a moment.
President Ricketts. President Ricketts, Counselor Gwynn would like to speak?
No, that's okay. I'd like to speak after the vote on the process that I spoke on when you were having technical difficulties, but I want to get this, just vote first, so I'm good.
Point of order? It looks like one of the counselors wants to call the question, but they put it in the chat box. So I would, I want to invite that counselor to call the question.
Call the question.
Now he said, okay. So Counselor Mayo has said, call the question. I did see the chat thing, but it wasn't like out loud, so I just.
But also, I just, point of order, can, can everybody kind of rein it in and give President Ricketts the respect that she needs for this meeting?
It hasn't happened most of this night, so thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, Counselor Mayo has called the question.
Point of order, I believe calling the question requires a second.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm, I'm waiting. I'm not, I'm not going to force anybody.
Second, Jarvis.
Calling the question is a non-debatable motion. If it's acceptable to the president, I'll go straight to a roll call.
Thank you. So tell everybody what their yes and their no means, please.
Okay, yes. The motion has been made to call the question. If you vote yes to the calling of the question, we will go directly to voting on the ballot question as read by Counselor Gwynn. If you vote no to calling the question, debate will continue. The vote to call the question, Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
No.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion to call the question passes by majority. President Ricketts, would you like me to explain what the next vote will be on?
Please.
The next vote will be on the ballot question as made by Counselor Gwynn and seconded by Counselor Elmer for a ballot question to go on the November 2nd, 2021 general election ballot regarding Charter Section 7.8. Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Joelyn.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So Counselor Gwynn.
Yes, I don't know how to proceed here.
Do you need some help?
I can't hear you, but maybe there's other councils that want to run this meeting.
Right now, I could do it. So the Articles 5 through 10, for our legal, they have not looked at this in, as depth as they want to. They need to spend some more time on this. So at this time, they would like us to move these to the September meeting so that they could look at these more and make sure they give good rulings on it. They're just looking over the language on 5 through 10. My correct, Counselor Gwynn, is there anything you want to add to that? I think you're muted or?
No.
Okay. Clerk Scott, can we just put this on the September agenda or do we need to vote on this?
I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask a question because I'm not sure if I heard everything?
Okay.
Are we moving all of the charter amendments to the next month's meeting? Is that what I heard?
Yes. Madam Clerk was just about to explain it, but Counselor Wheeler has a question also, so I'll let him ask his question so the clerk can answer both at the same time maybe.
Thank you, Madam President. My question was just, may we ask for consent or ask whether there are any objections to passing over the following five articles?
Yes, absolutely. And Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, President Ricketts. I, I believe unanimous consent would be acceptable, but I also believe that if the council chose to provide consent to move Articles, motions 5 through 10 to the September council meeting to set a finite date that they would be brought back up, that would be more appropriate than just unanimous consent.
So Counselor Wheeler, did you want to make a motion or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to try. So I moved that Articles 5 through 10 be moved to the September regular city council meeting.
I'll second that. Elmer.
Seconded by Elmer.
Yes, ma'am.
So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Okay. I don't see anyone wishing to speak in the chat.
Oh, whoops.
No, there's no one in the chat. There is no one.
Okay. I'm going to be using my iPhone again for this. Okay, seeing none, can we just have a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder. Counselor Disorder, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes. Item, agenda items number 5 through 10 will be placed on the September council agenda meeting for consideration by the council. And President Ricketts, I, I know you're having a little bit of technical difficulty, but if you could speak up a little bit, I don't know if the audio is being captured, your audio is being captured. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so next will be presentations of petitions and similar papers. Are there any committees who would like to report out? You could just yell on out there if I don't see raising your hand. Okay, seeing none, unfinished business, old business, new business. Page 35, this will be Counselor Forgie for the first reading.
Thank you. Order number fiscal year 22-009, the city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wida Gardner, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, reserve fund transfer request. Move that it be ordered. Ordered that the sum of $10,000 be transferred from 01001320.5781 Reserve Fund to DPW Parks 01004380.5433 Swim Area Materials to cover expenses associated with unforeseen flooding at Nashus Mill Road Recreation Area. Reserve fund balance is $75,000. Balance in 01004380-5433 Swim Area Materials is $7,000. Majority vote required.
Thank you. So page 38, Counselor Disorder. Is there anything to?
Page 38. The following, the, the following zone amendment promote proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration. A men zoning map for property located at 28 to 34 Colorado Avenue, MPR 42-4-0, submitted July 16th, 2021 by Alan and Janet Keys. Amendments to Chapter 200, Zoning, Section 7.17 Marijuana Establishments, submitted August 6th, 2021 by the planning board.
Thank you so much. Motions for reconsideration? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved now.
Again, Stempel.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night. You all log off. I'll shut the light off. Go ahead.